This is Sarah Malus, Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. This is a hybrid meeting. I will call the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting to order at 7:01 PM on Wednesday, June 21st. I have with me in the room Brian Solissey, John Benares, James Mitchell, Catherine Howe, and Sean Sun. We will begin the meeting this evening with Four North Street. Four North Street is a combination of a new application and a continuance of the hearing from last month. I will open the public hearing for the application of Todd Peratore, TJP Design Group LLC, on behalf of Susan King for a variance under sections 12.4.6 and 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw, and to open the continued public hearing for a special permit under sections 5.4, 7.2, and 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw, and other relief as may be necessary for the replacement of an existing detached garage and build a new attached garage such that the new garage will be moved south by four feet, increase the distance to the real lot line to one foot, and west four feet, increase the distance to the side setback to five feet, four inches, thereby increasing the footprint by one foot, six inches in width and three foot, six inches in length at Four North Street, Assessors Map Number 51, Lot Number 21, District D. The application for the variance was filed with the town clerk on May 24th, 2023, and the application for a special permit was filed with the town clerk on March 28th, 2023. Are you prepared to present this application? You're muted. Yeah.
Hopefully you can hear me?
Yeah. Do you need to show your screen?
I do not.
Okay.
All right. So if you can hear me all right, I'm just gonna put those down. All right. So as we discussed last time, we have a non-conforming garage that's in disrepair. We can't fit it. I can't see. I'm looking at myself here. Give me a moment. All right. So give me one moment. All right. So what we did in response to what we discussed last time, we moved the garage forward and back and out in order to increase the rear setback to actually one foot. We also officially made it connected and applied for a variance. We, as we discussed also last time, that there's really no viable alternative for another location for an attached garage. I mean, we're not making the condition worse. I mean, I think it's pretty much clear what we're asking for. So I think I could probably just leave it at that. Aside from my Zoom problems.
So do you have a question?
What were the conditions? We asked them from that to amend.
So the problem we had was that with a detached garage, the setbacks are smaller. So the detached garage on the side meant the setbacks, but on the rear it did not. And so it was, I think the rear was .93 from the lot line and now it's one foot. And so they moved the garage forward to pull it out of the real lot line in a miniscule amount, and they moved it to the left to pull it away to decrease the encroachment on the side setback.
I just told you about this.
Yeah.
And since we're attaching it, we fell out of, we were no longer an accessory structure, so we had to apply for variance.
And he also said in his write-up that they couldn't put a door between the detached garage and the mudroom because it's only one foot, nine inches wide, so there was no room for a door. So the only way to have the direct access was to connect it. And it looks to me like it's right up against that roof patio.
Yeah.
Looks good.
Any questions, Brian?
No, this is what we asked for.
I don't have any questions, Don.
With that, I will see if there's members of the public who would like to ask a question. Mr. Gates, would you please state your name and address?
Timothy Gates, Two Desmond Avenue. I find it incomprehensible to accept these sketch drawings by a unprofessional person who did not seek out the still-standing surveyor's marks and work from those and appears to have gone around sort of bent over with a yardstick, taking little marks and one long line. Mrs. Susan King has included in her deed the dimensions of the survey that applies to that border of the northern boundaries. And it's also in her mortgage, and I don't think her mortgage would like to accept this plan reducing the scope of their interest in the land underlying the plot. We know from our sketch here that certain distances have been measured from an incorrect sketch. There is a survey mark. I'm the garage from Gufton's recent survey. And the line goes right through the mudroom built in the spring when Lisa King first bought the property. And my mother leased his house as a summer residence. And there's been a blistering sore that the mudroom extended into her property from 1983, but she was not in state. And it's been a blistering sore continually trying to get Lisa King to agree to change the boundaries. And she's always said, "I'm not going to do anything about it. Leave it to the next people." The beginning brothers who were trust administrators refused to do anything about it, but it was in the deed that they had drawn up for this sale to Susan King. And why Susan King is trying to change that survey with this sketchy plan, I do not know. And I think the plan before and after, which have no, a new addition, I'm identified of the sea level combinations. And I'm disputing each of the plans, the before and the after, as being irrelevant because they're incorrect.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gates. You've made your point. I took the liberty to go on to the registry of deeds and pulled off the A and R that was approved in 1976. And from what I can tell, the measurements on the A and R agree with the measurements on this plan that we received.
As I said, the mark from the survey that Gufton says is right and the existing garage and goes right through for the mudroom.
Thank you. The mudroom and the garage have been existing for some period of time. The, the, hold it. The request they're making is not going further into the setback. So it's a grandfathered, non-conforming structure, and they have a right-
It's a active dispute for 20, no, 40 years.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gates. That's not an issue for the Zoning Board of Appeals to deal with. That is an issue you would need to take to the land.
Land court?
The land court. We can't, we can't-
So can, may I speak to-
Very briefly, because we're from the last meeting.
My husband is not in order of the property. He's speaking on, he received a letter in ourselves because we're within the certain fee, whatever, from the house. We live on Desmond and School.
And I'm the right-
And I've been trustee of my sons for this property because both of our sons own the property that Mrs. King, now with the all other previous Mrs. King, that they're not related from what we found out, have. So we never asked for abatements. I discussed it after you suggested at the last meeting that you cannot deal with this yourselves, and we agreed. That's true. So you suggested that maybe Mrs. King and we can talk outside, which we did. I gave Mrs. King all the records we had, the letter of my mother's in love. I gave her a copy of the photograph that we had taken of the post of the surveyor, which was done two years ago. I gave her a photograph to see that Mrs. King, Eliza King, Elizabeth, had done just a few years before she died. And the post, I haven't here the photograph if you want to see it, is right in the middle of her back entry, that little room that she had built. And so it's not something that we make up or it's not something that we ask for from the sessions. It's not that we are asking for abatements. There is a law that if Mr., whoever is the designer who designed these records, he signed as a designer, that's why I told him, designer, has any idea, we checked. You don't even need lawyers to do this. If Mrs. King would like for $1, to what we asked, not to get our land back, just to make a straight line, so we don't have to deal anymore with this horrible situation that nobody wants. She doesn't want, we don't want.
And that-
For $1 herself, and $1 myself, we can come together and file to the deed straight line.
Okay, that is perfectly fine, but that is not something to come before the Zoning Board of Appeals.
But then we can be negative to the petition of Mrs. King at this point because we are asking us-
Not during the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Why not?
Because we are only looking with respect, applications submitted for a variance and the footprint of this proposed building do not go more into the setback than the existing buildings. And we're dealing with existing, non-conforming structure, and anybody has a right to rebuild an existing, non-conforming structure.
We don't argue with this. We don't have anything to do with this. We can, she can do whatever she wants in her property. As far as I go, we're saying, how can anyone allow a structure to go on without boundaries being correct? And you are looking at the property and the design.
That's not our point.
Right. It's not something that's before the Zoning Board of Appeals.
So where do we go for it?
I suggest you contact an attorney and deal with it.
No, attorneys, we contacted, and that was Mrs. King's attorney, and gave us the same answer. That's how it was, and that's what it stayed. And I have his record. I enjoy emails. So I don't understand why something will go on wrongly or perpetually. And the town even record have the land that Mrs. King, now King and before King, all have it in their property, which is ours.
Well-
Ours to show that it's theirs.
The G I F lines are not accurate.
Well, it's in our, it's in our deeds and our plans for the, to the deeds when they were filed, the exact plan. With surveyors and everything.
Go ahead, Karen. I really understand why you're frustrated. I think this is an extremely frustrating situation.
I'm sorry?
It's very strange. I understand. It seems very dilutive that we can't just fix it here while we look at the rest of the situation, but it's just the way the process works. We're not trying to be dismissive of you. We actually don't have the power to change.
So I can come to you because we're going to extend our home with wrong lines, and you can okay our building that we would like to extend, even though the line is not correct to the neighbor.
We, I'm sorry, but the lines that are on this plan we received agree with the A and R that was filed in 1976.
They don't. How come it is surveyors two years ago, not even ourselves, had the line right where it was in 76?
I'm not, I can't speak to somebody else's survey. I can't speak to that.
Somebody went out and did the survey and filed it, and then it makes all the others previously wrong, even though we have lived there for 40 years.
I, I'm sorry. I can't speak to that.
That's what we're trying to do. Even if it is wrong, it's not-
I mean, Mrs. King said, "I don't want to go to court to spend money with lawyers and everything." We don't want either. We want a solution to just make this mess-
The solution doesn't lie here.
We don't have the solution.
We can't fix it for you.
So if you don't go to court and lawyers, where do you go? In this town hall, in this committee? What committee? Defense committee?
No, there is no committee.
So that means you can do anything you want if you have a wrong plan?
The planning board approved an A and R in 1976.
Yes.
And the measurements on that A and R agree with the measurements on this plan.
So our measures are wrong, even though it's our plan?
I don't know.
This is our survey that they talk about. It wasn't anybody else?
I'm sorry, but I'm not going to discuss this anymore.
So do you want to verify the survey for ours there in our property? Why not? Because it's not our survey that they filed. They filed our own survey. That survey was our-
I'm sorry, Mrs. Gates. You've had your chance to speak, and this line of discussion unfortunately is not within the purview of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
So we are silenced without any name?
I can't solve your problem.
Yeah.
We can't solve your problem, and I'm sorry you have a problem.
But I have, I want to have that in detail telling me so I can understand that maybe I'm not intelligent enough. We have a deed, we have a deed-
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. We have a deed and a plan that they filed, which is ours in 76, and you're telling us is wrong, and you say it's right to them, but we have the same plan.
Regardless of respect, I know neither one of you want to spend money, you know, an attorney, but it's, that's where it's gonna lie. Okay?
Isn't that sad?
It's unfortunate. It's unfortunate.
There's literally nothing we can do about this.
But you're agreeing that it's a survey done in 76, which is right, which is ours.
We're not agreeing that it's right.
We're just-
You go by. We're just agreeing that that's what the paper trail says.
You go by. Would you go by the file?
I'm saying that the measurements on the A and R in 1976 agree with the measurements that are on this piece of paper.
That's how.
Did you measure when you went to survey the deed?
We don't do that.
But that's why you don't know that it's-
I'm sorry, but I can't continue this conversation anymore. We have a bulldozer to nothing. And you've had your opportunity to speak, and we repeatedly said unfortunately, it's not a matter properly before the ZBAM. And I'm sorry. Is there any other member of the public that-
I oppose to have a building on top of that garage in this case.
Building on top of a garage?
If they built anything on top of the garage, I would-
That's right.
Would have to, it would have to-
Do you have a new hearing and?
Yes.
We can't rule on speculation. Okay, we can only rule on what's before us.
And they all say garage is what they built, so I oppose if they built on top of it.
Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak? Um. Do we want to impose a condition that the garage can't be built on top of?
Is that, is that sure? If, is that what you're saying?
Yes, I'm not, I'm not understanding that.
Second level on the garage. See, the issue we have is that the existing garage with the detached garage, which has different setbacks from an attached garage. And the reason I think is probably because of potential for adding a second floor on top of an attached garage. So I believe Mrs. Gates is saying she would be upset if a second floor was added on top of the garage. We could put a condition in our variance that a second floor can't be built, if that's something we want to do. It's not something we normally do.
Yeah.
But we're approving a garage here. We have a proposal in front of us. It doesn't include a second floor.
Right, but we can-
Further down.
We can put conditions on it because it went from a detached to an attached, and we could put a condition on it that you can't put living quarters on second floor of the garage.
If we approve this as a variance and someone, another owner or Mrs. King comes before us to add on a second floor, doesn't that require?
A special permit.
A special permit?
Yeah.
So it's not automatic?
Right, right. That's right.
That's what I, that's what I, so they or may not have to put it in the decision.
That's what I'm asking what people want.
Yeah, it still requires going-
Okay.
We're voting on one garage-
Yes.
-style here. Now, down the road, it's gonna have to come before us again, anyway.
Yes, now would be a time for you to raise your objections.
To the height.
There's enough checks and balances in the current process that will allow that. At least by rights, so I don't think we need to condition.
Okay. Any other thoughts from the board?
Can I just ask, since I wasn't here during the first meeting, am I voting on this tonight? Or?
It's a variance. I was here, will be here.
Who else wasn't here?
I was here.
You was.
I was here.
I was, I was.
Okay, so you not want to vote on?
I don't mind voting. I'm just asking as a procedural question.
One meeting, and the minutes were released.
And the content was essentially the same as today.
No, I'm fine with the application, so.
You ready for me to make a motion?
We're ready.
I'm ready.
I move to close the public hearing and the continued public hearing and approve the application of Todd Peratore, TJP Design Group LLC, on behalf of Susan King for variance to replace the existing detached garage with an attached garage based on the determination that a variance is required, not a special permit, since the setback requirements are greater for an attached garage than those for an existing detached garage. Based on a finding that owing to the circumstances related to the shape of the lot, especially affecting such land, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a literal enforcement of provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship by not allowing a garage large enough to house a vehicle and with insufficient space to allow an exterior door egress from the garage, it would involve substantial hardship if the garage is not directly attached the existing mudroom for direct egress from the garage into the mudroom at Four North Street, Assessors Map Number 51, Lot Number 21, and District D, filed with the town clerk on May 24th, 2023, based on the following conditions. The new garage footprint will be moved four feet south to increase the distance to the real lot line from .93 feet to one foot. The new garage footprint will be moved four feet west to decrease the distance from the side setback from 6.84 feet to 5.25 feet. The footprint of the garage may increase 1.5 feet in width and 3.5 feet in length for an overall dimension of 15 feet, six inches by 23 feet, sufficient to accommodate a single vehicle. The proposed garage shall be located as depicted on the proposed site plan provided by Jay Giroux dated May 19, 23. The proposed garage shall be constructed substantially as depicted on the plans prepared by TJP Design Group LLC dated 5/19/23. A110 proposed floor plan. A210 proposed south elevation. A220 proposed east, north, and west elevations. That sound good? Do I have a second?
Second.
Change a second. Any discussion? I'll take a vote of the five full members. Brian?
Approved.
John? James?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
And Sarah? Does anybody want to write it?
I'll read it.
John will read it.
I'll review.
Someone's calling up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
I'll have next.
Yes. I want to hear my phone silence.
My phone, my watch worked.
The next application is for Four Butler Ave.
Yay.
I will open the public hearing for the application of Brian Stein, BDS Design, Inc., on behalf of Joseph and Elise Campanelli for a special permit under sections 10.1, 12.5, and 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw, and other relief as may be necessary to raise the existing, non-conforming structure in the flood zone one foot, add additional levels for additional living space, and adjusting the footprint per footprint, which will result in it encroaching an additional .1 foot into the west side setback, adding a depth which will encroach an additional .4 feet into the setback at Four Butler's Avenue, Assessors Map Number 1, Lot Number 33, and District B, filed with the town clerk on May 15th, 2023. Is Mr. Stein on?
I am. Thank you, Madam Chair. May I share my screen?
You should be all set.
Okay. Says it's disabled. Yeah, still disabled.
Is it still disabled?
Yes.
Click on this place.
Yeah. I went into, I said, make. He's got, you've got co-host provisions.
Your screen. Oh, there we go now. All right. All right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, everyone. My name is Brian Stein from BDS Design, representing Joe and Elise Campanelli. As a number of you saw last night at the site visit, we have an existing, non-conforming house at Four Butler Ave that is also in the flood zone. We are proposing to, it's an existing split-level house. There was an existing garage on the lowest level at about elevation 10. In its previous life, previous owner converted that garage to living space. The main first floor of the house is at about elevation 13, which is off the front entry of the home. So we essentially have a split level, and then there's another level above the garage currently, so what we are proposing doing, what we have to do, is raise the main level of the house that's currently at elevation 13 to elevation 14 to- meet flood regulations. The owners would like to convert the existing garage or the, the existing living space, there was a garage, back into a garage. Um, and then we're proposing to add, um, a couple of levels of living space above the kind of current levels. So again, it's a split level and it will maintain a split level. Uh, so we are adding a level above the existing elevation thirteen and above the existing garage space. Um, so I'll just go through floor plans. Uh, so this garage and garage level plan shows the garage and mechanical room. Uh, and then, then the existing crawl space that's underneath the current main level of the home. Uh, that will essentially remain. The next level is the entry level and then the level above the garage, um, which is about a half le, half level up. And then again, the upper levels include just basically bedroom space for master suite and two other bedrooms. Um, the sorry, the existing existing home is just not quite adequate for the growing family. So the proposed is, is, will provide much, a fair amount more space for them. The proposed is about twenty-five hundred square feet of living space. The, uh, the other portion of this is adding a deck off the rear of the home that, you know, which allowed them to have outdoor access from the main living space. Um, and then down a set of stairs into the yard. The current non-conformity is across the, uh, I'll call it the nor, north side of the house. Um, which is about eight and a half or nine feet away from the property line, depending on which corner you take it from. The the existing house is twisted ever so slightly against the property line, which is why, you know, to bring the deck off straight from the existing house, we're point one feet farther into the setback than the current condition. Um. Getting to the elevations, I know a question was asked at the site visit last night that, uh, you know, wondered how much farther we were going up from the existing home. Um. You can kind of see here the existing is dashed in red.
Can you do that?
Yeah, that's helpful.
Okay.
So on the, in, in this drawing, the left side, the west side, which is the current garage side of the home. Um, we are about thirteen and a half feet higher in that respect. And then on the other side towards the, towards the street, we're about eleven feet higher. Um, and it's just, I'm just gonna go around the sides here. This is the front of the home o, off the street. Um, so the existing roof line of the, uh, main level of the home and then the level behind it, excuse me. This is the existing north elevation or the proposed north elevation with the existing shown in red. And then the rear or west elevation. So really, we're adding a level on each portion of the house is really what it comes down to. Along with the deck in the rear. Uh, one question that was raised by the butter at number six uh, was the impact that it would have on sunlight throughout the year. We fortunately had this modeled in Revit and I asked one of my staff to model as close as we could the, the house at Six Butler Ave, based on photographs. Um. So we, we took photo, or not photos, but we did, um, sun studies based on its GPS location um, for various times throughout the year, basically at the solstices, so, um. Did, you know, various times throughout the day, eight AM, noon, two and four. Uh, at eight AM, you know, on, in March and basically September twenty-first, the eastern sun is obviously casting a longer shadow towards the backyard, so the front of the houses are are indirect sun. As you come around at noon, the new home casts a bit of a shadow, you know, on the very bottom of the home at six. Um, at two o'clock, you know, again, on the bottom of the home at six. And then, uh, you know, at four PM, both, you know, both sides of, on the eastern shade, but there's a relatively minimal shadow on the kind of eastern side of, of the house at number six. Um, in the summer, they have a little bit better condition, no shadow cast at eight. Really minimal at noon because the sun is so far, uh, high in the air and pretty vertical from the house. Two PM, kind of the same thing, almost. And then, um, at four, it's been around to the west enough that it doesn't really cast the shadow. Um. You know, on, on number six. Uh, and then in the winter is, you know, probably the worst case out of all of them. Uh, again, it, early in the morning, doesn't really affect it. Noon affects it a little bit. Casts a bit of a shadow, um, on the south side of number six. And then at, uh, you know, two and four, again, it casts a bit of a shadow on to, on to number six there. So hopefully those studies are helpful. Um, you know, we have the survey that shows how far off each house is from the property line, so the distance between the two is accurate based on the survey. And, um, we were, you know, probably a little, a bit conservative in the height of the other house, so. Um, you know, these, these are quite accurate, um, in terms of, in terms of the shadows and the sunlight that, uh, that will happen. Um, overall, we don't feel that this addition is substantially more detrimental of the neighborhood. We feel it's in scale with a number of other homes, including on the corner of, on the corner of Butler Ave and, um, and one twenty-seven and, or I'm sorry, uh, Shore Road and, uh, also the house next door, number six, which is in the same scale as, uh, what we're proposing here is, along with a couple others across the street. Um. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this point.
It looks like there's quite a bit of room in the lot. Is there a reason why you can't go out instead of?
Yeah, there's some reason. We're, we're not too far off the fifty-foot no build, um, in terms of wetlands and conservation. Um, there's also a bit of a septic in the back there that, uh, we would be encroaching on, which I'll, I can show you in a sec here. We have our existing, you know, septic tank and so forth, um, which isn't too far away. We have to be, um, you know, minimum of ten feet from that. And we're just being encroaching even further into the into the wetland buffer. Um, also, part of that is, uh, for cost reasons, we're trying to stay essentially on the same footprint. As I'm, you know, I'm sure you know, increasing footprint and site costs and foundation costs and so forth is fairly expensive than trying to keep, you know, your foundation and, and building off of that. So that was, those are two, the two main reasons for that.
Can, can you also speak to how this qualifies as a two and a half story and not a three story?
Given the, given the split level and the, and the dormers, I mean, we're, we're under the height restriction, uh, first of all, and, you know, we have garage space, we have living space on the first floor. Um, and, you know, we have dormers in that third floor. Um, and, you know, we have a fair amount of it. Well, only a fair, or only some of it's in dormered space and then there's a fair amount of it that's not dormered.
Are the, um, lower, uh, the garage walls four feet underground?
Uh, no, they are not.
So they don't qualify, it doesn't qualify as a half story?
Right.
Um, is the third floor have four foot high walls?
And some of it, yes.
Well, what about that central part? That looks like a four feet story.
Which, which part?
The flat roof.
Right here? That's a stairwell. That's only, that's only over, that's only over a small portion of it.
But it looks like it's three stories.
Three stories.
I don't believe it's three stories, no.
Well.
By definition. I'm sorry?
I don't see how this qualifies as a two and a half story house. And even if you're within the height limit, you have to be a two and a half story house now.
Hmm.
And I just, I, I.
Because.
You don't have enough information.
You, you have, you have to take the entire footprint. So we only have that partial story over of, over the left side, in this case, the left side here, whereas we've only got, we don't have the full three stories over the entire footprint.
I don't think that matters.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, it does. It absolutely does. You take, you take the whole footprint and it's a percentage of that footprint. It's not just the section that it's over.
And you provided that information to us?
I can. I mean, it's pretty, well, build a floor plan. It's the, it's, uh, what's the percentage? It's like, you know.
I, I don't see that on the section over the garage that that top level has only four foot high walls.
But it's not just that. It's a, it's a percentage of the footprint over the entire home.
Yeah, what, what I'm reacting to in our bylaw says it cannot exceed two and a half stories. The house, it doesn't say a percentage of the house. It says a house cannot exceed two and a half stories.
But it define, it defines a half story.
Yes, and it has to be a for a level not to be considered a first floor. It has to be buried four feet in the ground.
Yeah.
So the garage would have to be buried four feet in the ground or it's considered a level. And the top floor has to have walls that are only four feet high. And I just, I don't have enough information, but I don't see that here, but I could be wrong.
Right. But I believe it, it also talks about a a percentage of the overall area.
Bylaw does not.
So I guess dealt with this on, uh, on Bennett Street and it talked about there, there, I know Paul, I know Paul and I talked about it, the percentage of area.
H.
But I, I can get that info.
He's looking it up in the code right now, Brian.
Height regulations. No structure shall be erected or altered so that it exceeds two and a half stories. Or that it exceeds the thirty-five feet. There's nothing about saying, it says chimney spires or towers. Yeah, and it's whichever is lesser. So it doesn't say that you can take an average of what's there. It says it can't exceed two and a half stories.
Right.
From the mean construction grade.
Right.
Yeah, where, how's that defined?
A half story.
Well, the stor, story isn't about the construction grade.
A half story is defined as a story with a sloping roof, the area of which at a height of four feet above the floor does not exceed two thirds of the floor area of the story immediately below it.
Correct.
Yeah, but that still has to be four foot high walls.
Yeah.
But, but again, it's about the overall area below it, which involves the entire footprint in this case. It's not just the area.
They're two separate requirements.
Yeah, it has to be, the walls can't be more than four foot high. For to count as part of that.
No, that's not how it reads.
It sounds like it, it can be as long as it's not more than two thirds.
No. Has to be both. Four feet. The walls can't exceed four feet and the area on that floor with the four foot walls.
No.
Exceed, exceed two thirds of the square footage of the floor below it.
Right.
No, it's, i- if you, if you have, if you have walls at four feet, right, and it basically, in this case, that strip, this kind of long gable piece can't exceed um, two thirds of the whole area.
No.
Yeah.
Go ahead, James.
Brian, what is the height of the new walls in the master bedroom portion?
A, about six.
Okay, so it exceeds the four foot.
Right. But, so this whole area can't exceed two thirds of the rest.
I'm not sure that's how we're interpreting.
No, I think, I think we need more information as to the height of the walls in each of the floors. Because we don't have sufficient information to make a determination.
A boy.
Do people agree with that?
Well, it's in vagueness here.
Yeah.
Well, it says it, it can't exceed fourteen high.
No, it's not, no, that's not what it says.
Yes, it does.
No.
I, I think. The roof above cannot exceed four feet. Can you give them that section so you can see?
No. A half story is defined as a story with a sloping roof, the area of which at a height of four feet above the floor does not exceed two thirds of the floor of the story immediately before.
Right. It doesn't say you can't have more than four foot walls. Because. Yeah.
I think it's okay, but I don't get to.
I, I think that we need.
We can provide the calc.
We need more information as to the walls in this height situation.
That, that's fine. We can do the calc of, of everything.
I, I think, in my opinion, I think they're okay because it's not the entire third floor. That's how I'm reading that.
It's a full version of that middle section, doesn't it? That makes it a third, three, four, three floors.
Other part of the house there stays though.
Yeah, but you see, uh, i- 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 because of different roof lines, you can't extrapolate.
That's why the, that's why the percentage is there. That's why the two thirds is there. You can have part of it, you know, exceeding a certain, a certain strip versus the rest of it.
But it's not all on the same floor, Brian.
I understand. That's why, that's why it talks about the area, the whole area.
You can't count it if it's not on the same floor.
Well, it talks about the area below it. It's not, it's not the, it's not just the quote unquote, the third floor. It's the area below it.
Yeah, but he's trying to use the square footage of the section that isn't.
I, I've actually, I've actually talked with Paul about this on another project, um, previously, maybe a year ago, and, uh, he, he agreed. It's the whole area of the floor or the the house below it. It's not just the area immediately below this section of the house, if you will.
Well, I, I.
Spelled that as floor.
What?
Just spelled that as floor. I mean, by law.
Yeah, but they had different floors on this plan. It's, it's not all one floor.
No, you have to deal with the floors that are in that, that section, not the rest of the building.
Right.
No, it's the rest of the building.
Okay, I, I think that we need calculations.
What are you asking him to calculate?
We have no idea what height of the walls are in these various floors.
Why does it matter?
Dimensions.
Why does it matter?
Because of the bylaw.
Where is it? Where is it? I've been looking through here and I.
Page twenty-five.
I give the new bylaws.
Five point, five point five.
Page twenty-six at the bottom, section five point five, height regulations. And it's like the last sentence at the bottom of that page. And it is a bit ambiguous.
Cause my understanding, I have to spoken and founded.
It's a story, half stories define, it's a story with a sloping roof.
It, the four feet is the, the area, the, the point at which you determine the area. So in this case, in this case, we have to determine that whole upper area.
Okay, I, I wanna move off of this point.
Do we have a sloping roof throughout the whole section?
I don't know. We don't have the calculation. We don't have the information.
No, you do, you do.
Except for the stairwell.
If you look at the south elevation, you're seeing the sloping roof.
Is there a ceiling?
I, I'm just telling you, I see a sloping roof and there's.
There's dormer and windows.
But if it's an attic, it doesn't count. We don't know what's in there. We need the information is what I'm saying.
Are you concerned that the, the bedroom space, which is below the peak art, is not covered with the ceiling, but it all goes all the way up to the roof?
I don't know, Jim. We don't have that information.
Help me out here. It says two and a half stories or thirty five feet. Whichever is lesser.
Right, the lesser.
So.
So he's meeting the thirty five feet. But I'm not confident that they're meeting the two and a half stories. The way it looks, it doesn't appear to me be two and a half stories. It appears to be three stories. If you look at that garage, the garage counts as a story because it's not four feet underground, so it's not a basement. And so it looks like that's three stories.
Not living space.
But if you look at this, if you look at this west elevation, you have the garage is one floor and there's that floor.
And that's a third.
There's a third, but you see the, the roof comes down.
But we don't, we don't know.
We told us both knee walls are six feet.
Yeah.
But they're not four feet.
No, they're not. So we have to count that whole area up there.
In that section, but not the rest of that.
You have to look, because it's a split level, you have to give each section separately.
Exactly.
You can't, you can't borrow stuff from another side when it's not.
This is really the contention about, well, they're all three stories here.
This one's fine.
Would it be helpful, we've got the information from Paul Orlando on where he made a ruling?
No, we, we need the information from Brian Stein and the calculations and I'll go to town council.
That's fine. We can provide the.
What?
Need some sections, sections and calculations.
Thank you. Okay. Sections and calculations. Okay. Um.
Continuum.
Any other, no, we haven't taken public comment or anything yet. Any other questions from the board?
No.
All right, now.
What happened?
I do have a comment. Uh, I know the neighbors at the site visit last night, expressed a concern about shadows. And I think Brian's done a commendable job on showing shadow studies every time of the year. It seems like the impact, with the exception of the winter, is pretty general. The only thing that would be helpful, and I'm not asking him to do more work, would be if he had a model of the existing house and you consider the shadows were versus the proposed. Hopefully you look at what he's done for studies. It, it, it makes a compelling argument that it has a very small impact on loss of sunlight. I'm just going by what I see on the page. In the winter, I can, I can agree that there's more because the sun's lower, there's more of the impact. But I do, I do find that to be helpful and it was helpful for you as well.
Um.
Cause we live there.
Excuse me, wait till you call up. Um, is there any member of the public that would like to speak to this application? If so, state your name and address.
Sure. Ohio. My name is Jeff LeBar. I live at, in the, in the six bucks grab. And I personally would say, these guys that we're fully here to support them. We don't, we're not here to have or not be able to do the dream house, you know, you can say anything, get it, and, uh, and that's like first and foremost, you know, I, I hate being here. I've been through this a couple of times and I've had to, you know, that I don't, we're reasonable and we would never be here if we didn't think it was a real, uh, issue for us. And the, the main issue is the light. I, I know, like what he said at certain times that there, that, that are, we're most concerned about, so it's the, um, sun facing side of the house. So they, these houses are, their setback is eight and ours is thirteen, that's twenty one feet. And they, they, it's gonna go way up. It already, we already have very limited sun, right sunlight. So like what he was saying, then I can, and I even, you know, we reached out to Joe the other day. We, we got the plans on Monday. So it's done. I, I should go back and forth.
The area, my, my name's Holly, I'm right, but the area most affected of where we live, our kitchen and dining area is, is that, is that area right next to the house, the back. Uh, I don't know, but it's, you know, like in the winter, obviously it's most effective, but, um, I would have to look better at these drawings, but that's, basically that's where we live, you know, so we look at the side of their house through the windows of that room already.
I, I.
We have some.
I think we ought to speak to his study because I don't think it's correct. I understand that's, you know, it's a really nice presentation, but what he said at certain times of the day that there's no obstruction, there's already obstruction. What? All the time. There's, there's a few.
Because, I mean, well, I mean, it's tough because that's, that, that portion of the house is, like I said, our kitchen, dining, living area. If it was bedrooms or bathrooms, I wouldn't, I wouldn't care. But it's, you know, we look from our, um, kitchen and dining. And we look toward the sun, you know, the south facing side of our house, right? And I have all my plants. Uh, we look at the side of their house, just, you know, twenty, twenty feet here. Less. At all.
The, the thing is, and I also, you know, I reached out to Joe yesterday in the morning and said, you know, I thought that the architect was gonna come and take a look, that I think would be really helpful. And also, and I'm so happy Joe came over and looked at, and he agreed, like, you know, it's very close and of course there's gonna be major, when you go up as, as high as they are, it's going to be, you know, it's gonna be seventy percent less light in there, I, I, you know. And I would love to do a study. I would like, love the, I'd be very interested, but I, I, I hope we don't even have to go there. I just wanted like to be heard that, like, is there any other, and I wish it was before this process and before they're this far down the road, but are there any other ways we could work it out that every, that they get the square footage that they want, but maybe it doesn't, you know, make that side of our house, the only sunny side, you know, so dark. And I mean, we're losing, we're losing the entire view that way. We need that, but it's the, it's really the sunlight.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, and sorry, one last thing is, it sounds like the, that back portion is the portion that is tall as well.
Can I just say one thing? The, um, observing the field conditions, it's also a very large tree there. Yeah. And I would make the argument that if you really wanted a completely accurate shadow study, you'd have to include the tree. Because whether or without this addition, along with sunlight, it's still, it's still blocking the sunlight. So there, there's an argument to be made. I'm not suggesting anybody cut down a tree. But what I am saying is that the loss of sunlight isn't as significant as it may appear when you factor in the shape of the tree, because it's a very large tree.
I mean, I.
Very large tree.
Okay.
Hello?
Thank you.
Hello? Hi. Hello? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, hi. My name's Phil Keating, across the street from.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Just barely. You're really mudding.
Okay. I'm a neighbor of the processor from Joey, in a recent story. Um, uh, first of all, there are a lot of trees. And I think if you want to go back to the study.
Yeah.
House. It has, it's fast enough to reach, uh, the house.
Maybe you should try dialing in.
Was it?
No.
Bill, I think, oh, okay.
But.
It's my, it's our neighbor Phil. I, I put him on speaker.
We can't, cause I have to go through the recording.
Hello?
Oh, there you go.
Well, that's good.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay.
Please say your name and address.
My name is Dr. Philip Keating. I'm at One Butler Avenue.
Oh.
Sorry about my audio problems. Um, first I'd like to say that the, um, I like that you did the solar study, the shadow study. But there are trees that are taller than both of the houses in between the two, uh, in between the two properties. So the idea that the shadow of the proposed um, addition would substantially change the light impinging on the other house is, uh, at least in the spring and the summer and the fall, I think, is, is a bit of, uh, something that you could model and really get a real number on. First of all, so I think if you, if, if you looked at the trees, you wouldn't be too concerned about a shadow being cast from the proposed addition onto the other house. It's, the, the trees are too tall. Number one. Um, number two. It doesn't, didn't sound to me like there was a clear understanding of what calculations were requested. It doesn't sound like the bylaw is very, it is an exclusive or.
Yes.
The word, it said thirty five feet or something else. That means one, or, that means one or the other, not both.
It says the lesser of.
I, I couldn't hear what you yelled at me.
It says, the bylaw says the lesser of two and a half stories or thirty five feet.
Yeah, and I didn't hear a clear definition of a half of a story. So I think, I think what needs to happen is there needs to be clear direction on what calculations you're expecting someone to do. It's certainly not clear from my point of view, what, what calculations you're expecting someone to do.
It's there, how it's not, see the difference between, yes.
Mine do.
This looks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Keating.
Yeah, I, I had one more, I had one more comment. As far as I'm concerned, um, as far as I'm concerned, as a homeowner on the street, I would welcome an addition to their house. I think it would help the neighborhood. Uh, they're great neighbors and I look forward to little, little Gordy growing up in this neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak as well, uh, Nine Butler. I don't know how to, I'm not a very technologically.
John O'Hara?
Yep.
And what?
Uh, I'm at Nine Butler Ave.
Okay.
And I would like to, I would agree with, um, with Phil on both the trees and also I think the clarity of, uh, that, you know, third floor, four foot wall, I, I think that's very ambiguous. Uh, and I'm all for the house. I think it would improve, uh, the neighborhood, I think also in, in fairness, um, the house on the corner of Butler and Raymond is certainly, is certainly, the, it certainly has maxed out its height and also the neighbor at number six, the same. So I think out of fairness to Joe, uh, and his family, uh, that he's certainly not, uh, exceeding either one of the, the size or height of either one of those houses. And yeah, uh, I, I'm in construction as well. And so that discussion about the four foot knee wall and then the, the bylaws, that, that just really seems very very confusing, uh, and also not, not very exact. And so, uh, I think, you know, my only thought on that is that, you know, that, um, uh, that has to be clarified, um, because it, it doesn't seem to be very clear, even, even your, your partner on the, on the board said it's ambiguous, so. That's my thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
One, one, one more comment from a resident.
Who's this?
Uh, Josh Kaplan. I'm at, uh, Seventeen Butler.
Okay.
Uh, I can't speak to the, the technical stuff that, uh, that John did, uh, but I can just echo that, you know, I feel like someone else said, I think the, the construction would increase the property value, uh, of all the houses on Seventeen Butler. So in that respect, um, I would certainly be for it. And, um, yeah, I'm, 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 I would, would back that decision to, 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 for that, let them build.
Thank you.
I, I'm sorry, uh, myself the same at nine. I'm, I'm for, uh, I'm for them as well. So just, okay.
I, I think that, you know, one of the challenges we have is that the house is in a setback. And they're building more mass within the setback. So we have to make a determination whether that increase in mass is more detrimental and injurious than the existing non-conforming structure. So that's what we have to look at. And that's our challenge. I mean, another house may be taller, but if it's not in the setback, it's not an issue. And that's the challenge. It's because it's in the setback. We don't care about the other sides, just the section that's in the setback. So if there was a way to do the second story or the third story or how many stories there are, and it didn't go the full depth of the current house and was on the line with the setback, then it wouldn't be the same issue. Cause it, and it probably would have the same impact on the shading, but it wouldn't matter because it would be on the setback line rather than into the setback with more lax.
You know, even if you took off the roof, you would still have more than two and a half stories.
Right.
I think that, that part of the bylaw is very confusing. And, um, I think it, it might get, if it went into court, it might get, that caused a problem. I think it's not clear. Uh, and I think the way it's being interpreted tonight is one way to look at it. I don't agree with it. You know, if I were, I'm not sitting on this one because I'm still on Auburn it again, but I would have issue with that.
With which interpretation?
Pardon?
With the interpretation, Randy, applicants or with the.
No. I, I think they're probably would be okay.
We, how would you feel about getting an opinion from town council on the meaning of the wording of the bylaw?
Yeah, that's what I planned to do.
Yeah.
But, but we need more, we need more information. Yeah. We, because we're not provided with anything that tells us dimensions.
Sections and calculations.
Sections and calculations.
What kind of, were you on square footage calculations?
Yeah. James, what calculations would we need?
Yes.
Well, you could do volume, you could do square footage. Uh, the sections are vertical slices of the building, so you could see the height of the knee walls in question. You could see the stairs. What exactly are you looking for though? That is not clear. Well, to find the two and a half story versus three and the ratios that Brian was talking about with respect to allowable proportions.
It's not volume.
It doesn't exceed two and a half stories. That's obvious by looking at it. You have the garage level, the next level and the bedroom, the definition of a four foot knee wall, yes. I don't know what you're looking for in the way of dimensions. It does exceed two and a half stories.
Well, I was. But Jim, our problem is, is that the architect is disagreeing with us. So we need the information from the architect to understand why he thinks it complies.
I don't know why he's disagree.
I'm not disagreeing with Jim.
It's not two and a half, more than two and a half stories.
He said it's only, you're saying it's only two and a half stories. Is that correct, Mr. Stein?
I mean, I would argue that, yes. I mean, I, I'm agreeing more with Jim.
Jim's saying it isn't two and a half stories.
No, it's three stories. It's obvious looking at it, it's three stories.
You just said, oh, I thought you said it wasn't three stories.
No, no. I mean, it's obvious that it's three stories. But it can, it can exceed two and a half stories, as long as it doesn't exceed thirty five feet.
No, it's the lesser of the two. Whichever is lesser.
Right, which is the third, less than thirty five feet.
No, it's, it's, it's either two and a half stories or thirty five feet, whichever, the lesser of the two's.
Which in this case, it's less than thirty five feet. Right?
I think that's very confusing.
If two and a half stories is less than thirty five feet, you can't go to thirty five.
There, you're measuring apples and oranges, stories and feet. That's not a consistent measurement.
That's what the bylaw is.
What's that?
I don't disagree with you.
No, I think there's, bylaw is confusing and I would think that um, it would be looked at differently by maybe other people.
So we'll go into the new town council that will tell us. We've been with the new town council that will advise us.
I think that would be smart to get information from council.
Yeah.
But I think to look for dimensions, it's obvious it's more than two and a half stories.
I think based on the wording in the bullet bylaw, we need the sections so that we understand the height, so we understand.
Understand his argument.
How the bylaw is applied.
Yeah, we can give you the square footages. Yeah, we can give you the square footages.
And the sections?
I mean, the sections are, I mean, it's very similar to the elevation, but yeah, I can I can tell you. The square footage of the levels. Right, and then versus that upper floor. What it is below that. That's what it's, that's what I was talking about. That's what I've done with Paul in the past.
Brian, I may. Hi, can I make another comment, please?
Who is this?
Uh, this is Phil Kitting from One Butler.
Yeah, this will be your last chance for a comment. You usually allow people to speak once, but go ahead.
What I said before was, I think what needs to happen is that the specific. Data that you're looking for from the architect needs to be clarified.
Thank you.
Otherwise, you won't get what it is you're looking for and he will be in the. He'll be, you know, bring me a rock and it'll be the wrong size rock, so I think that needs to be clarified.
Thank you, Mr. Kitting.
I agree with you. I think that's what we're trying to do.
My my question was where it says on. The south elevation where it says the top plate. Does that? Mean that that's the start of the third, what does that mean, the start of the third floor?
That's where the roof springs from.
The roof springs from there.
So it's sixty. Is the knee wall.
So how how about I propose, how about I talk to Paul to see what? He wants. He's he's essentially the enforcement officer here with this.
No, no, we're going to go to town council, get an interpretation of the bylaw, which might not always agree with what Paul is saying.
Wow.
Well. All right, he, well, yeah, he can he can follow that or not. Correct.
Yeah, I was just.
He has to follow the spec, whatever is in a special permit.
Well, no, but the the definition here and how he. How he determines that half story and how he wants the calc's determined.
Well, you certainly can.
Because I've done that in the past with him on other things.
I think it's smart. He's the code enforcement officer.
That's fine. But.
And it could be a little bit of a different situation if it was not a. Pre-existing non-conformity depending on the four or five.
Well, and the problem is because this is split level. It's not like. So you have to look at each section separately.
Well, that's the question. I don't necessarily agree. It's it's that's why I'd rather have, well, Paul and or. Town council's opinion on that.
Okay. So. Is is there any member of the public who hasn't spoken who'd like to speak in this application?
I have, I spoke, but could there be a lot more more things?
What more?
Um, I just, again, I think any of, if any of the neighbors were sitting in our house and knew the light restrictions that are real. A second opinion, but I want to, again, the only reason I came here is to see if. The architect had any other options like for that. Three-story, you know, wall that's going up, is there any way we could soften up if it still get there? That's all I was here to try to do that. I, you know, I want them to have. But I just wanted that opportunity and I didn't, I don't think I ever got that opportunity. And to be honest, they had an architect that called me that I know very well, eight months ago and said, which, you know. I I want you to know we're doing this for, you know, for Joe and Elise and we'll show you, you know, the plans. We want you guys to all be involved. So it's smooth and everything. And, you know, I was giving, on Monday, that doesn't give us any time and also. I, you know, I was having a question yesterday, the architect was going to go and we could talk about that. I don't want to design their house.
Thank you.
Just worried about that.
Right, thank you. I I think that we're heading towards a continuance, so that gives you more time to.
That, I hate that, but I don't know what I could do.
So is the. Applicant agreeable to a continuance to July?
Wow.
Yes.
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 Um, Brian, can you stop sharing your screen?
Oh, yep.
I can't see anybody else when the screen. Okay, thank you. Yeah, great. So, are you ready for me to make a motion? At the request of the applicant, I move to continue the special hearing, the public hearing to July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. At seven P M and extend the period for writing the decision to October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. For the application of Brian Stein, B V S Design Inc. on behalf of Joseph and Elise Campanelli. For a special permit under section seven point two, twelve point five, twelve point five point two of the zoning bylaw. Under other relief as may be necessary to raise the existing non-conforming structure in the flood zone one foot. At additional levels for additional living space and adjust the footprint. Resulting in a slightly greater approachment into the side setback at four Butler Ave. Assessors map number one, block number thirty-three and district B filed with the town clerk on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a second?
Second.
James seconds. Any discussion? Vote. Brian?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
James? Catherine?
Approved.
And Sarah approves. Yes.
Let it go.
Sorry, I'm doing up the. Continuance so that the property owner is consigned.
It's really weird. I mean, considering. It's not the lesser.
Yeah, well, those one is fine, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you very much.
Now move to one seventeen school street. What'd you say, Jim?
I said, or at least zooming school street, yes.
Are they here?
Brian's representative.
The Brian's.
Same mark.
Oh. Christopher Day's on Zoom. Um, I will open the public hearing for the application of Brian Stein, B V S Design Inc. On behalf of Nicole and Christopher Day for a special permit under sections four point two E five. Two point zero and twelve point five point two of the zoning bylaw. Under other relief as may be necessary to install a ten foot by fifteen foot. So we've got three fabricated pool raised a couple of feet above grade with a locking cover. And fence installed between the driveway and patio and along the property line at one seventeen school street. Assessors map number forty, block number two and district A filed with the town clerk on May fifteen, twenty twenty-three. Brian, are you presenting the project?
I am. I will share my screen again. Can you see this site plan?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So we are one seventeen school streets. A few of you were there last night. We have. The existing house up just off school street, driveway running along the side. Coming around to the back, they have a drive under garage currently. The, I'm gonna go to this next plan here, just clarity. In general, just to run run through everything, we we've been through the planning board, a few meetings there regarding a drainage system since we are in the groundwater protection zone. And we were over the fifteen percent impervious, which required us to do a drainage system, which was approved. Just in general, we're expanding the driveway to allow them a little bit more turnaround space than they have now, which is, you know, a number of you saw was pretty tight. Yesterday. We are proposing a small. Around eight by fourteen soak pool, which I know you're familiar with, I believe. It's a. Precast concrete pool that it's kind of craned in and and plopped into the ground. More or less.
One sixty-eight bridge street.
Okay, no problem. We have some significant existing screening, as you saw yesterday, and some significant proposed screening going in that's around the pool itself. We have a, you know, generous sized pervious patio. That is going in along with the grill area and then, as you'll see next month, this party or pool barn. Our pool house, whatever you want to call it. We have some stepping stones, blue stone stepping stones out in the lawn here to kind of continue the patio. But again, mainly we're here for the pool. Again, pretty small footprint, roughly eight by fourteen. It's a couple of feet out of the ground. The soak pools themselves have, you know, a few options for a light inside the. The pool equipment will be over here behind the future pool house. So screened from basically everyone's view, given the fence that runs along between them and the neighbor. So, again, it's pretty pretty standard pool equipment that you're all familiar with. So again, it really, it won't be seen from any other property. There's, you know, again, significant screening here. There's significant screening in in the rear of their lot and then significant screening on the on the southern side as well. I think that's pretty much it on my part in terms of in terms of the pool.
I don't see any type of a lighting plan.
The the pool has a light in it.
Are there not going to be any lights on the patio?
We have. Matt Ulrich here tonight, who is the landscape architect, who could who could address that.
Hey, folks, Matt Ulrich from the Ulrich Landscape Collaborative. So we don't have a lighting plan as of yet. As Brian mentioned, there's going to be like an interpool light. We'll probably be doing some path lights would be it, which would be some, you know, downward facing, basically ground mounted lights. So nothing, they would definitely be dark skies compliant, just to safely light, you know, probably the pathways in the patio.
Um, what about? The fence, I don't see that. I I'm not sure I see that depicted on the plan.
It's on the drawing.
Right.
So it is.
No, they they say there's going to be one between the driveway and the patio and I don't see that.
It goes across the driveway.
Where?
Right here.
Doesn't say, there's nothing to label something as a fact.
It sure looks like the same, it's a line going across from the corner of the house. To where the fence coming down the property line. And it's a right angle and it. It jumps over to the corner of the house. I believe that's what the fence line is, am I correct?
Correct. I don't know, Brian, I have a more updated plan that shows fence for like going along the backside of the grill.
Yep.
Returning to the house. I can't, this isn't zoomed in enough, I can't see it.
That's not.
Open that way. Left.
Did you, do you have it to share, Matt, or?
Yeah, can you, can you enable me to share my screen? I can show you the current landscape plan if somebody wants to allow me to share.
Oh, sorry.
There we go. Okay. Everybody see this, okay? So I think this is a slightly updated version for what you were looking at. So. You can clearly see here coming in off the corner of the, everybody see this, okay? I guess we shouldn't start, okay? There's a gate right here, then this fence continues up through here. Comes back across, comes down the back and then links up with the existing fence that's already here and then we return back. Into this corner of the pool house. There's also a cover that goes on top of the soak pool in addition to the pool fence that's enclosing everything. Usually that's either a retractable cover or a roll-up kind of lockable cover that goes on top.
How deep is the pool?
They're only five feet.
So I see the fence along the hedge and I see the gate. And then where does it connect to the fence at the bottom?
It doesn't.
So it's here. Here. Then this is all existing fence. Along the property line. Existing fence.
And added it in.
And then this is the fence in the back.
So it's connecting into the. Barn that doesn't exist, yeah.
Yes. Yep.
Um, are there questions? Of the board?
Does the pool barn come later?
Um, it's my understanding an application was submitted today. So I have some concerns about. Approving a pool before we've. Looked at the barn, particularly where the fence is connecting into the barn.
Well, they could just extend the fence all the way to the other fence line if the barn didn't get approved. Right on the same path it's going through.
Yeah, but we would.
That could be a condition.
Where's the fence connected to the barn?
I mean, I would just say they're at risk of the of the pool house not being built.
Yeah.
I mean, we always approve pools on the condition that all the security measures are in place anyway, so.
And I would just make it clear, you know, to that point that we've not moved the whole building, whatever it is, and, you know. Don't know if we will until that application comes before us, if they want to proceed with the pool alone and we. For us to hear that application on the middle name, that would be at their risk to do that, I would think. I don't know. What does everyone else think?
It makes sense. I really don't think they're going to build a patio or the pool without. They're not going to start that construction. Given the sequence of construction, they're probably going to pour the foundation of the pool barn first.
All tenements will need to be.
Yeah, but doesn't, doesn't the pool barn affect the? Overall usage? Yeah, but doesn't, doesn't the pool barn affect the overall usage of the pool?
It may, yeah, but that's still the improvement. All I'm saying is I don't think they'd start the construction of the.
Well, if we approve a special permit on the pool, they can start the pool now.
For a project, it matter if they want to build a barn, I don't think they would. I mean, isn't that true, Brian?
Then why wouldn't we wait and do the whole thing together?
Well, because, because it's before you and I, I think, I think the only thing that is really in question here is the fence and you can condition that to fully enclose that area whether the building is built or not.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I'd rather just have.
Why this wasn't submitted as one package?
Well, it wasn't clear that we needed to submit for the barn at the time when we submitted for the pool.
So will the barn be a variance or a special permit?
Um, I've been to town council on this. Um, it's a non-conforming lot and the case law is not clear whether a new, it's a new non-conformity because it's a new accessory structure. But case law is not clear whether it's a special permit or a variance and we have historically issued special permits. And he thinks.
It's definitely not, it's definitely not a variance. The only reason it would have been a variance, like you said, Sarah, is if we were over the lock coverage.
Well, and, and the new structure would be within the setback requirements.
It, it is, the new structure is fully conforming.
Yeah, the issue is, um, coverage.
But it's not, so we're, we're under that.
Well, the paperwork we have chosen issuance with coverage, so, yeah.
Yeah, that, yeah.
It just needs to be adjusted.
Yeah, the, the surveyors was an error, the civil engineers plan is, is correct.
Yeah.
Which was approved by the planning board.
Well, they're not approving the pool, they're approving.
No, but.
Drainage.
Yes. Which was based on that lot coverage.
So, any questions, other questions from the board on the pool? Any member of the public who wants to speak on this application would reach back to the pool.
I, I would like to ask a question through you, Mr. Day, because you concerned the pool, is he a son of Mr. Day of Manchester?
I think so.
Uh, no, I'm not. My son of Mr. Day of Manchester? No, I'm not.
Okay, because we have a pool motor that we closed in, uh, in ground four and we give it for free, so.
Wrong answer.
Anyway, okay, okay, so we want to move forward with the applications before, I think so, okay. As the pool only. Yes. Um, I moved to close a public hearing and approve the application of Brian Stein, BDS Design A on behalf of Nicole and Christopher Day for a special permit under sections four point two E five two point zero and twelve point five point two of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to install her so that she fabricated pool approximately ten feet by fifteen feet. Raised a couple of feet above grade with a locking cover. One LED light within the pool, a pervious patio and fence between the driveway and patio connecting, um, to the fence along the property line. At one seventeen School Street, assessors map number forty, lot number two in District A filed with the town clerk on May fifteen, twenty twenty three. Based on a finding that the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw. The proposed pool will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located. And the requirements and conditions under section twelve point five point two of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met based on the following conditions. The pool and patio are located as depicted on the plan of land prepared by Drew's Land Surveying dated five, ten, twenty three. The landscaping installed is substantially consistent with the landscape plan one prepared by Ulrich Landscaping. And any lighting will be low voltage LED lights, including one inside the pool. A fence is installed between the driveway and patio and along and, and connect to the property line to conform with the Manchester by the Z zoning bylaw and Massachusetts Building Code. The pool contains a locking cover and total coverage by structures and impervious surfaces shall not exceed thirty percent. Do I have a second?
Second.
John seconds. Any discussion? Vote, Brian.
Yes.
John.
Approved. Approved.
Sarah approves. Who would like to write this? I'll write it. Okay. So you're all set on the pool?
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Administrative damage. Did people have a chance to review the minutes from May seventeen?
No, we've not reviewed it.
Okay. They came out maybe last week. Okay, apparently not.
Sorry.
I got lost in me, I did not review that, I will.
The meetings from May seventeen.
Did you review them?
Yes.
Oh, good job.
You checked the spelling punctuation and what do you call them, call them, uh, the Catherine How test? She says that good even.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the status of decisions. And within that category, I wish to discuss one Dexter Lane, the appeal. Um, I have received two letters. Well, I received two pieces, one is a request, um, by the law firm representing T. Philip and Cynthia Pabinos that says with respect to their property at one Dexter Lane. Manchester by the sea, the Cominoses hereby notify the Manchester by the sea zoning board of appeals of their desire to withdraw slash abandon their special permit granted under section six point one point two and seven point five point two of the zoning bylaw to change the use of the property from a two family to a three family filed with the town clerk on February second, twenty twenty three. The Cominoses have just sold their property at one Dexter Lane as is as the two family use and as such, the special permit is no longer needed. Second piece of material received was, uh, notice of voluntary dismissal filed with the land court um, by Benjamin Timman, the attorney for C. Dexter LLC and Ron, Ronald Carter Relly. Um, saying that the plaintiffs hereby dismiss this action pursuant to mass R. Civ. P. A one I. I, Benjamin Timman certified that the foregoing was served on all council of record via email or e-file portal on June thirteenth, twenty twenty three. Any questions?
Is that possible?
What?
We just got timing, you believe.
Yes, it's the same attorney, but he's not the one that was on the public hearing. But he apparently was representing him in court.
On appeal?
Yeah, on the appeal. So the, the appeal has been dismissed. And the property owners have asked us to withdraw slash abandon their special permit.
That's a big.
About it, we had to wait until the close up. Uh, we couldn't do anything. The property closed on June second.
Yeah, I haven't missed that one, James.
Yeah.
Wait, so do we need the new owners to ask us to withdraw? Travel with the, with the house?
I, I don't think so because, um, this was a condition of the voluntary dismissal in court. That's a special permit be withdrawn. And it was done, this was, this was sent to us June eighth. No, we thought originally that was going to happen and apparently they don't, they don't want it to happen, that's why. So, can I make a motion?
Yes.
I mean, I'm sure they probably agree, it looks like it from the lawsuit.
The, the, the sale was contingent on the fact that it was going to be a two family, not a three family. Because the special permit wasn't final because it was appealed. So it's never an effect. Binding on the new owners, I, I think.
Oh, yeah, that, that makes.
Makes sense? At the request of Natasha Winter of Dane Torpey Law Firm, on behalf of T. Philip and Cynthia Pabinos. I move to accept the request to withdraw slash abandon the special permit granted on February second, twenty twenty three under section six point one point two and seven point five point two of the zoning bylaw to change the use of the property from a two family to a three family at one Dexter Lane, assessors map number thirty six, lot number eleven in District C. File with town clerk on October seventeenth, twenty twenty two. Based on a finding, they notified the board that the property has been sold as a two family use, so the special permit is no longer needed. And a notice of voluntary dismissal of the appeal of the special permit by C. N. Dexter LLC and Ronald Carterelli was filed with the land board on June twelfth, twenty twenty three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ryan, seconds. Any discussion? Take a vote, Brian.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Catherine and Sarah both yes. And I'll figure out what. I have to write up and file. Okay.
You're going to stop being a boy.
The, the next. The next item on the agenda is the, to review and vote on the three zoning bylaw warned articles for special town meeting on June twenty eighth, twenty twenty two related to the zoning bylaw. Did people have a chance to look at those?
Yes.
And were there any concerns? The one good piece that's in there is it moves the special permit expiration in two years to three years, like we thought they'd done in November.
Well, we already don't have the power to grant a variance, right?
Correct, that's correct.
They're just making it very clear.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Um, do we? Is, is this really, is it really a criminal offense?
What?
Criminal disposition, isn't it? Wouldn't it be civil? Is it really?
They have both, they have criminal and non-criminal.
I know, but they're the same and is there actually a criminal?
I don't know.
Like, can you actually think, this seems very civil, but, I, anyway. Might not be a problem, that might be great, I just didn't know if it's actually a thing we can do.
But we don't.
Do it, then they can get to that point, but.
Yeah.
How often do they want to pursue it?
So you're saying we can't arrest you?
Citizens arrest.
Brian wants a badge.
Anything else?
I mean, no, it's, I, I will honestly say it's hard to compare without a.
What, well.
Your fault.
And a large section is, is for planning board stuff. If, if you look at twelve point five point four. You'll see that the, of course, they moved the sections again. After twelve point five point thirty.
Not in the, in the existing?
Oh, proposed new bylaws, okay, yeah. You'll see that the conditions, special permit conditions have changed slightly. I mean, it's pretty much the same, I guess, all different numbers.
To that point, Captain, hopefully there will be some narrative at town meeting.
With like highlighting what's changed.
And the, the twelve point five point five is, I had them say when appropriate. The zoning board of appeals refers referrals are done to other boards originally, but there's some wording in here that's saying it's required that makes me a little nervous.
Appropriate sounds better.
Yeah, because oftentimes we don't need to refer them to other boards. But that makes.
It's not our responsibility to know whether, I mean, I know a lot of us do know whether it needs to go for other work, but it's really not our responsibility to.
I think what they're trying, I think what they're trying to do is get the boards talking together more and then if it's questionable. You send it to another board and have them determine whether or not they want to say anything about it. Um, select board does that a lot, they send things out to lots of different departments and half the time the people say not a problem.
Right.
Try to get away from any heavy lifting as possible.
So, um, the site plan review doesn't impact us. Oh, there's a new section, the request for reasonable accommodation, remember we had that?
That's great.
Yeah, um, the only problem is it requires us to keep separate records. And it doesn't have to be a public hearing. But it can be. Okay, so do we support, and this other thing is just changing the numbers so they're right.
No.
And then the second one is if if Article three loop, what happened in November is they removed the planning board site plan review from the bylaws. And then they didn't take action on later articles.
With the intention of putting it.
It included the site plan review again. So they've included the site plan review in this section twelve. But if section twelve doesn't pass, then Article four says, let's reinstitute the existing site plan review that we inadvertently deleted in November.
I see, so question three passes, they'll pass over question four.
Yeah.
Site plan review is only for the planning board, it's not for us?
We don't do site plan reviews.
And those aren't in there, right?
Right. That's just part of, the site visits are a part of our process. Site, site plan reviews are, um, you review the plan and you might you might impose conditions, but you can't refuse it, can't deny it. Uh, but you can import conditions, okay.
That sounds, all right, that's how I just made me sure.
So as we can deny them. Um, is that are people willing to support these?
I think so.
If you say so.
Can I make a motion that the uh, zoning board of appeals supports the three zoning bylaw warrant articles? In, in, um, in our special town meeting on June twenty eighth. Everyone who agrees, raise your hand. Probably. Uh, Ron has called me and asked us to look at them and said it would be helpful if we supported.
So there's how many questions, three questions?
Three.
For the votes? Yes, no, yes, pass over, yes.
Yes, maybe so.
That's articles, but there's more articles than that in the town meeting.
On the zoning.
This is the three for the zoning and then they're going to do more in November.
Trying to chip away at the ones that didn't go through.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's basically taking off a little bite as opposed to trying.
Well, and I think that the, the stuff that was passed in November was somewhat piecemeal and they're trying to pull it together better because it kind of went out of control.
What's needed for a forum, so minimum number of.
Hundred, I believe. Is that right for a special town meeting?
Yeah.
Mr. Select Boy.
I never thought about it. So my question is that. I can lose you, there's going to be a lot of people there, I wouldn't worry about the corner, this, the school.
Doing the school budget.
School budget, it's got all, it's got. It's all John's fault.
The budget and, um, the ladder truck. And. Yeah, Sally budget because the, you, two of the union contracts are settled.
Some overtime for the.
Sounds like a fun name.
That would be cookies.
Uh there's gonna be candy.
They do have. Food at the school committee meetings, I'm just saying.
Yeah, and. Needs to be for us.
No.
This is James's last meeting.
Oh, that's right. Thank you so much, Jane, your service. We're going to really miss you.
It's nothing personal.
Yeah.
Do you have uh anyone lined up to replace?
We have an application from Robert Sott, but.
He hasn't heard anything.
Well, nothing's gone before the select board.
So he's got to, but he's got to, is you want, you want to meet him first or?
I don't think I need.
So I'll just have Debbie.
Well, the, Jim, have you decided what you're doing?
No, because you have a decided. New applicant. If a new applicant becomes a permanent member.
Yeah.
Then I can be an alternate.
Okay. So you're gonna stay on as an alternate unless and until we can find somebody to fill your spot.
Yeah, you have to let the clerk know.
Yes, so that I'll send an email. To Debbie Powers. Tomorrow on the zoning board stuff. I done it with the finance committee and did it, but I hadn't. I thought I had done it on the zoning board, but somehow it hasn't appeared, so. Okay.
Sorry, recall from our last meeting, however, Jim agrees to that as long as he will not be interviewed.
Yes, and then I interview this year, they're interviewing next year.
Really, so how does this new guy get?
I had to get grilled when I.
A new person.
I got grilled, it was on TV and everything. Have a microphone. I was at your house. And walk up that. That seems arbitrary, some get interviewed.
No, new new members do.
Right.
But they, historically, they haven't renewed, they haven't interviewed people.
Or renewed, that's true.
And next year they're gonna start that. The for the, they won't do it for their first renewal, they'll do it for the second and success.
Open up your file. It appears that you've. Voted.
So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
I want to say something to you before you leave.